And could I please have Ms. Valenzuela, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, with the republic for which it stands, a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, Amy, would you please take roll call?
President.
Here.
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 Here. At this point, I would like to open public communication for those items that are not listed on the, this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and please state your name, and you have approximately three minutes. Seeing no interest, I now close public communication. At this point, we'll move to the first agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any objections or concerns in regards to the minutes of the last meeting?
Chair Muse, in regards to the minutes from the last meeting, I would like to make a correction on the motion moved forward for the ordinance 1290. Mr. Wood moved the motion forward, and I seconded. If we can make that correction, where Mr. Padilla be removed from there, and my name be added, really appreciate it, and we can amend this minutes and move them forward.
Thank you. Any objections? Okay.
I'll second.
The motion is to approve the minutes as amended.
No objections. We have a second by Mr. Woods. Any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. The next agenda item is a presentation, and I now give the floor to Amy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to introduce to you Laura Stetson of MIG. She's going to try to mean of what we've done today on the city.
Here we go. Is this being recorded to Amy? Do I need to repeat anything? You're good, okay. I'd like to recognize Salvador Lopez, who was instrumental in getting this element moving forward, really from the get-go, and working with Amy to get a grant from the state of California through the Strategic Growth Council. And this grant was put forward because Baldwin Park is identified as one of the top 10 cities in the state that is exposed to environmental hazards and that is faced with issues that not all other cities face. And so, the city did apply for a grant to look at ways to start to address some of the concerns that the community has. And so, that resulted in this health and sustainability element that I present to you this evening. What I'd like to do tonight is to give you an overview of the element, knowing that we're going to be coming back in January for a full public hearing. So, this is just an opportunity for you to ask any questions of me, or Amy, or Sal, and for us to walk through the element. I've got a presentation, which I hope will take no more than 10 to 12 minutes. You can feel free to, please, to ask me any questions as I go through it. I would like to also recognize before I go through that Commissioner Valenzuela and Commissioner Padilla were a big help through their participation on the ad hoc committee to review the draft element and to provide input. And so, it was really a great working group that we had to provide a lot of wonderful, wonderful insight and input on the health and sustainability element, which really builds on a lot of the work that the city's been doing over the last two or three years with regard to health. And so, this addresses not just personal physical health of residents in the community, but environmental health, and how to sustain that health moving forward for the people who live here and for the resources that are so important in Baldwin Park. This, as I've indicated, this element not just captures what the city has been doing, but looks forward to be more proactive, and importantly, to put together under one umbrella all of the things that have been done in kind of disparate, if you will, hopscotch fashion. There isn't any one driving program or policy to address health and sustainability in Baldwin Park. It's been a series of programs that have been the results of grants or neat ideas that people had. And so, this element is the attempt to bring it all together under one umbrella, with the overarching goal of improving public health and environmental conditions for a better quality of life for everybody who lives and works in Baldwin Park. As I mentioned, there was an ad hoc committee. They were just one part of a community outreach program that consisted of going back probably just over a year ago, maybe about a year and a half ago, to a series of stakeholder interviews that Sal and I did in the community. There was, and still is, a project website where residents could comment and stay abreast of everything that was going on. Back in July of last year, we had a booth at the Taste of Baldwin Park Festival to get input from folks. We also went to the carnival on November 3rd to continue to ask questions for people about what health and sustainability mean to them in Baldwin Park, and to help us prioritize with the issues where the Planning Commission and the City Council could address over time. We also met a couple of times with the BP Rack, and we were very successful in getting a bunch of volunteers together to take a short questionnaire out into the community. I think we ended up getting 80 or 90 questionnaires back that residents asked their neighbors to fill out, and so those were very insightful as well. And then, as I mentioned, lastly, we did have four meetings with the ad hoc committee ending in September of this year. And over the course of this year, people in Baldwin Park were really helpful in defining what health and sustainability meant, and we were really pleasantly surprised at how the kids really got into this. They provided a lot of insight and said things like, back at Taste of Baldwin Park, they were very concerned about smoking and the effects of smoking. And these were questions that were prompted in any way. These were things that people spoke about when we were asking about health and sustainability. And so, the kids were very attuned, very aware, and very interested in these topics. So, I think your local school district is doing a good job in asking questions of them and teaching. And so, this graphic, which is really at the front piece of the element, shows what Baldwin Park means to be sustainable, from green streetscapes to infrastructure that captures runoff and charges it back into the groundwater, to public spaces where people can play, to community gardens, to use of solar, to a place where people can feel safe walking and biking and get out of their cars. And so, that's what this graphic is showing, is a compilation of everything that we heard. Also, a front piece to the element is the vision for what is meant for health and sustainability in Baldwin Park. And I won't read this to you, but it's very nicely encapsulated at the beginning of the element. The structure of the element, like any part of the general plan, and this is one of the general plan elements, it's a new element to your general plan, but it's grouped around goals, big picture ideas, policies, what is the Planning Commission and City Department staff and the City Council going to do with, on a, as part of their leadership and decision-making process to forward health and sustainability goals. And then, lastly, a very long list of implementation actions. And these are things that staff is still looking over, so we're not asking for direction quite yet from the Planning Commission on these, but I'll show you at the end of the presentation how the implementation actions are structured. And those are really the marching orders. What do you do when you're looking at the annual budgeting process as to those things that the city wants to do to address the health and the sustainability goals? There are three broad categories that the element addresses. Our city, that essentially means the built environment, how is the city built, how are roads built to forward environmental goals. Environment, the environment, our environment being the water, the air, the green space in the city. And then, lastly, our health, and it talks about residents' health. And so, these are the key groupings for the goals in the element. In the "our city" element, for example, the topics that are addressed are compact development, meaning a lot of the things that you've started to do in the downtown area with the MetroLink station here, and really starting to build a more walkable downtown through the specific plan that's going on, ways to improve walking, biking, transit usage in the city to get people out of their cars, making sure that the infrastructure that's put in is not just channeling water straight to the channels that flows down to the ocean, but it's capturing and recharging your groundwater basin. And then, lastly, community safety, what can be done from the built environment standpoint to improve community safety? Just as an example of a goal, a very overarching goal is to improve and create a place for pedestrians bicycling and transit, such as safe routes to school, bike routes like the one that has been put already along Ramona, but what else can the city be doing? And I think, Amy, did you tell me the city just adopted an active transportation, non-motorized transportation policy? So, the City Council's moving forward even before the element's adopted, and so those thoughts are in mind, that these are things that are good for the city to be doing, and the council agrees on a number of things. So, you've got a, you'll have a big goal, there will be a series of policies to implement that broader goal, so policies get down to the deeper level of how you're going to improve bicycling, how you're going to make pedestrian movement easier in Baldwin Park, like fixing sidewalks or putting sidewalks where they don't exist. And then, after that, you get down to the action statements, such as implement a complete streets policy, or implement a safe routes to school program, which is already being, in the process of being done, or developing signage that's tailored towards walkers, bikers, and transit users, not just people in the cars. So, these are the things that actually cost money over time to do, and so these are things that will have to be part of the budgeting process for the council. For the environment element, or the component of the element, the element addresses reduce, reuse, recycle, and we added a new one, compost, to it, so it's the three Rs plus the new C, compost. Energy conservation, being water-wise, appreciating the natural features that are in Baldwin Park, contributing to improved air quality, addressing climate change and the effects that that has, and encouraging the use of environmentally friendly products and packaging. So, there are goals that address those five broad topic areas. Big goal, improving environmentally friendly products and practices, as I mentioned, a policy to promote use of things that have a less harmful effect on the environment than some things that may have been used in the past. And then, action items, again, these are things that the city will do in concert with, for example, its waste hall or waste management, to make sure that the city is reducing the impacts on the environment of, for example, waste products. Lastly, the health component of the element talks about parks, the great parks in Baldwin Park, how they can continue to be improved, how the park and rec department, or the parks department, will continue to provide programs and recreation opportunities for people of all ages as demographics shift in the community. Health education, partnering with the school district, the Baldwin Park Unified School District, on programs to educate kids, because it all starts with the kids. Access to healthy foods, the city has a corner store policy. The city has been actively working to encourage healthier food choices, allowing people to put in gardens, encouraging more community gardens, farmers markets, things that aren't dictating that people eat healthier, but it makes it easier for people to make those healthy food choices in Baldwin Park. Addressing healthcare needs, you've got a great partner here in the city with Kaiser, and they're doing a lot to help people recognize what they can do to improve their health. And then, lastly, this is kind of a thing that people don't think about much, is healthy buildings and places, and your health can be dramatically affected by the building that you work in or live in, whether or not there are toxic materials in the paints or in the ceiling or in the carpet. I don't know how many of you remember what we used to call popcorn ceilings and the asbestos that's associated with that, and so that, some of the issues with regard to healthy buildings and places is getting rid of those things over time that could affect people's health because of the building. Also, another aspect of a healthy building is, a building with a staircase that's easy to use instead of the elevator can be a healthy building. I've been in some buildings where all the choices that you have to go up two or three flights of stairs is an elevator, and a lot of times you'd rather walk because it's good for you and it feels good, so it addresses those issues as well. Just a couple of overarching goal, again, targeting the youth, and a couple of policies to support that. We had a lot of comments about community gardens and farmers markets as we talked to the public, and so that shows up as a very strong action item to work with the school district for garden plots on school grounds, but also to allow other types of garden plots. I don't know if any of you know that there is a garden plot over on the Kaiser grounds, or near the Kaiser grounds that the school district uses for education. And it's not just to grow things, but it's to teach kids how to cook, too, so they learn how to grow their own food and cook their own food and eat healthy food. I don't think there are any chickens or anything out there, it's just the green stuff. So, to get kids to eat their vegetables is a wonderful thing, tough to do, but you can do it if they have pride in what they've produced. Lastly, the implementation matrix, and I would turn your attention to that, that's at the end of the copies of the element. The version that I'm looking at is a version improved from yours, where we've indicated in a little bit clearer format, how the city might implement actions over time with priorities. The action items are listed as either a one-to-five-year, kind of a short-term action, a five-to-10-year action, or a 10-plus-year action, meaning it might be something that you look to do a decade from now, or it's a long-term plan or policy that, or action that will take place over that longer period of time. We haven't had a chance really to go through this in depth with staff. I know Amy and other members of other departments are looking at this, again, because these are fairly strong commitments as to what the city will do within these short periods of time for the immediate action programs, and we want to make sure that we get it right in the element before it comes to you for adoption in January of next year. It looks like this, although my version looks like this, yours is not as nice-looking as this, but the dots will indicate whether it's a one-to-five-year program, five-to-10-year, or 10-plus-years. The next steps are after taking public comment this evening and taking comment from the Planning Commission, to come back to the Planning Commission in January, so just about two months from now, to see if there are revisions and any directed, other directed changes that you'd like to make to the health and sustainability element, and if you feel inclined to approve it that evening, to move it on to the City Council in February. Of course, if you need more time, I think it's your element to play with and to make sure that it meets the city's needs before sending it to the City Council. With that, we will be available for any comments and questions that you have, and I, maybe I believe this is a public hearing, so there will be public comments, or is it a workshop? Or both?
It's a workshop.
Okay.
Presentation.
So, I'll take my seat, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any immediate questions.
Immediate questions.
Or unless you'd like to hear from the public first.
I do have a couple of questions, actually. If you go back to the issues in regards to healthy, the healthy buildings, do you have any idea as far as, as far as the elements for, like, how many homes are green, in a sense, using solar or, you know, the buildings, new structures that may be built with no grass, but, you know, what are they called? Drought-resistant. Drought-resistant, yeah.
I don't, but I'll use this as an opportunity to tell you that the city has been setting a wonderful example, both the city and the school district, in terms of doing green-type development. I think you may have seen solar panels over at the high schools, over some of the parking lots. Your Public Works Department has going, been going back and retrofitting public buildings to make them more energy-efficient. But in terms of private buildings, I don't have the answer to that. I think we're at the cusp, as you will, of moving forward with doing that. There was a new building code that went in place, I think, last year, the Cal Green Code, which will require new construction to be much more greener than it has in the past, but it doesn't require any retrofitting. The city does have a landscape ordinance in the zoning code, does encourage drought-tolerant and water-efficient landscaping. Again, that applies to anything new that goes in, so the city has been doing quite a bit, it's just going to take a while for things to catch up.
Can I back on that? I said the Cal Green, the building, it's very, very correct. And any type of new, in terms of solar panels. Solar is out there, and.
I know there's incentives from the state, and I know that's doing to lean down, but are there incentives from the city for that type of a program for solar panels? Because I know the solar panels from the school district is basically a grant that was requested and approved for them to get the solar panels. So, is there something like that, that?
The city, from what I understand, does not have anything ever. I do. I don't know what stage it is. I'm exactly sure what. So, it does, you know, sort of.
Now, the new construction portion, I know we're running out of land as far as new construction, but the new projects that are out there, specifically the one that should be, they're working on locally, how much of an impact will the, that policy be affected with that construction? Thank you. Any questions by any of the commissioners?
Yeah, I got a few questions, two questions in particular. The city of, I think the city of Los Angeles, or Pasadena and so forth, have given residents' credit for planning desert-type plans in their yards in lieu of grass, and they went like per square foot and pretty much compensated the homeowners. Is there any plans for the city, or anybody else to do that? Also, the other question is, on solar panels, some of the homes are not adequate enough to put any kind of panels on top of the roof. Has planning thought about maybe allowing some residents to put some kind of a structure in back of their homes so they can set up solar panels?
I see the solar panels, our code does not have to have them, or brands on the ground for almost, we are pretty much, that would require to have full. City of LA and Pasadena are changing that. We do try and work with.
Eighty-one, close.
Our work is actually not.
And Mr. Padilla, with regard to the programs that you're mentioning, I'm familiar with Pasadena's where they pay people to take out their lawn. In Pasadena's case, Pasadena owns its own water department, and so it has an invested interest to get people to reduce water use, just from that regard.
Also, next question would be, the conservation of water was brought up before, and then one of the meetings, that fire department was testing the fire hydrants periodically, every six months or yearly, and then just throwing water on the streets. Did we look into that yet, whether we can control this waste of water down the drain?
I recall us, indeed, that we did talk about that at one of our ad hoc committee meetings, and that's something that we could work into the element. I don't, Amy, I don't know if that's something specifically that the city's had a chance to address with the fire department.
One more. You know, we're talking about the schools, you know, healthy eating and all that good stuff with the kids that being promoted, but yet I see the little carts going around with corn butter on it, waiting for the kids to get out of school, and they start at 2:30 or 2 o'clock, they circle all the schools. Have we looked into that? Maybe we could curtail this people from doing that?
Because I'm sure those don't pass the health, so they, code enforcement can take action on those, you know?
Code enforcement and also CHP has done a good job around my area, right behind Kaiser, of cleaning that up. And I say that because I've witnessed, witnessed myself of all their product being taken away and put in their truck. I did have a question in regards to the health issues. You caught my attention when you said we're one of the top 10 cities. Can you give me a list of all the elements that we're actually facing in Baldwin Park?
Not off the top of my head, but what I'd say is that some, a lot of the issues deal with, number one, the proximity to the freeway, and it's a condition that's difficult to address because of the proximity to the freeway and the respiratory issues associated with being within 500 feet of a freeway, and what can you do to plant trees or do other things to capture some of the particulates and stuff. Also, childhood obesity, high blood pressure, a lot of things, the condition, diabetes, things that come with being overweight and having a poor diet, respiratory and circulatory issues.
Thank you.
We have a really big background report that we prepared that addresses those things, and we, if you'd like, Amy, I don't know if the commission was provided with that background report, or you could look at it through the project website, which is, we listed it. No, we didn't. Sorry about that, it's, I just forgot the name of the website. It's, I think it's sustainablebaldwinpark.com. Is that correct? Thank you, Sal. So, if you go to sustainablebaldwinpark.com, we have a big report on there that talks about all the health issues that were precedent to putting this report together.
I got one more. On those one-to-five-year projected actions, is there anyone that being started yet, or is there any plans to start any of them?
Until the element is adopted as part of city policy, it's not officially a document that the city could pursue, but as I mentioned, the city is doing some things that are in the element, that were in the works before, like the corner store policy, like the non-motorized vehicle policy. So, the city is starting to do some things. They're in the element, it doesn't negate the fact that there are things to wait to do, it's, so, nothing's preventing this, sorry, that's a roundabout way of saying, Commissioner Peter, nothing's preventing the city from moving forward with things. The element really forms the policy foundation for doing that and sets the reasons for budgeting for it.
Is there any budgeting as far as the next five to 10, or is there anything that, or do we have to wait till it's completed, the meetings that we're having?
With regard to the five to 10 years, that those are, the city can't do everything at once, and so what we had done in the matrix is really wanting to set up, what are the most important things to address in one to five years? There's nothing that stops the city, in fact, the city should look at this annually and look at the implementation program and say, are these still our priorities? Do we want to move something that was a five-to-10-year into a one-to-five-year, because we want to do it in the next couple of years, or we want to get it into a capital improvement program that covers a five-year period? So, the implementation plan is really a malleable document that the City Council and the Planning Commission should be looking at annually and updating to see if they want to reorganize the. the priorities.
Any other questions from any commissioners?
I just have a comment. You know, Amy, it would seem that, that fire department problem, they have pumper trucks, why don't they just pump that water from the hydrant right into their truck and save all that water? That's simple.
I just have a quick comment. I just want to say thank you for coming at a meeting with us. It was actually very insightful and knowledgeable for me to sit through these meetings and sit with everybody who came together at these meetings continuously throughout the last few months, and hearing everybody's great ideas and thoughts, putting everybody together. I learned, and I'm still learning, so as I'm hearing different things about sustainability. So I'm looking forward to the great stuff coming in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you for helping through that process.
Amy, I have one question. Do we have solar panels on the garage? Okay.
I have one recommendation for the fire department. When they do this flushing out of the fire hydrants, they could very easily just knock on the door in a neighbor's house and tell them, can we put this water in your yard? That way it goes back in the yard. I think that's a good, they should consider that, at least.
Mr. Levis?
Quick question, is the implementation plan a separate document, or are you going to put it as part of the element?
That's a good, good city attorney question. I would recommend that it be separate from the element, so it's not subject to the being amended only four-time-a-year rule for a general plan element. So I guess that will probably mean two resolutions, Amy, when we move forward. Sorry.
Thank you for your presentation. Any more questions from any of the commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much. With this update, now we're still looking at January for the next meeting, correct?
This item, yes.
I was just talking about this item here. Okay, now, are there any more ad hoc meetings scheduled?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do we open up, we don't open up, this is a presentation?
Receive and file.
Okay. Receive and file. Okay, the next agenda item goes into staff reporting.
Thank you, Chair. The next item is under reports of officers, it's the plan for, for, um, October.
No.
Seeing none, I'm just kidding. Um, the next item is the purple update on the proposed Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility. The public comment is closed, and I believe that each of you received the letter that we, here in Irwindale. I just received today the public schedule for not only item number four, which is the MRF and the training, also for number five, which is the Olive Pit. I will be at along, moving along to number five on the Olive Pit, again, the comment that we forward it to, it looks like they're moving forward in one... FDIR, um, here to, uh, city council.
Amy, I'm not sure if the commission knows that it's thanks to the city of Baldwin Park, that their planning commission had to pull the item, because they did not provide proper notice.
Yeah, after the Olive Pit, they should, on there and address.
It delays them, but, you know, what?
And then the last item that I have is a purple update on the proposed residential sixty-two, seventy-six. Tomorrow, we will, um, be at the, at five thirty, heading division.
This information was mailed out to the, or how was it, terminated to the community?
We provided notice to all property owners with...
All right, thank you. In regards to the MRF and the information that we provided to the city of Irwindale, do you think they will give us a response?
They are required to respond to our comments. They're required to receive that response, and required to be deciding body, deciding body in this, any commission, act, or, is recommending, they would make recommendations on the application, IR, council, the city.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns to staff? Seeing none, I will now take a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
All right, here's a second.
Take a second.
Any objections? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.